Still live at the OC. I'm ready. It is time. All right, ladies and gentlemen, let's call this meeting to order and stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Oh, okay. Yeah. All right, roll call vote, please, or roll call.
Alderman Alder? Here. Okay. Alderman Alder? Here. Here.
Hold on, it's not your fault, Heather, we gotta, we gotta make it. Sorry.
Okay.
Test me again, Heather.
Here. 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 No.
I hear you, Heather.
Okay, thanks.
There you go. Okay.
Alderman Flores?
Here.
Alderman Galloway is absent. Alderman Poston?
Here.
Alderman Schaefer?
Here.
Alderman Smith?
Here.
We have five Alderman present. We have a court.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of December the 7th? Motion made by Schaefer, seconded by Poston. All in favor? Thank you. We have a scheduled guest, Ralph Phillips, who's the Presiding Commissioner of Christian County, is asked to speak, and so Ralph, you are next, sir. We can't see you, but I assume we can hear you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for giving me the opportunity to speak to the Board of Aldermen. This came to light on December 17th of some topics that I wanted to clarify on behalf of the county. But more importantly, I'd like to thank this Mr. Olson, who I have no idea who this gentleman is, for bringing us to light some topics that were discussed during that December 17th breakfast meeting with the Board of Aldermen. I personally disagree with some of the lack of total information regarding the decision to collaborate again with the city on the downtown project. So before I begin, I would like to start with saying simply is the sidewalk project in particular is something we started on three years ago, but decided to hold off just because we knew there was a possibility of your project. And I will give you the history that, as I know it, leading up to that, approximately two years ago, Mr. Childers, Mr. Galloway and I met for lunch. They showed the draft of what they proposed for downtown. I was excited. I put our project on hold, said, hey, we need to collaborate and do this all at the same time. Okay? So I just want to make sure everybody understands that first. So before I get into the topics, I would just like to respectfully ask the Board of Aldermen individually, other than the meeting I had with Mr. Galloway and Mr. Childers, has anyone ever reached out to the county, me, requested to meet, asked me, contacted, emailed, or anything of that nature regarding the partnering of the Ozark City and the Christian County Commission?
Well.
Okay, so I can assume that that would be a no, which would be correct. Okay. I don't mean that to be condescending, but I just want to make sure that people know that I'm here to talk to anyone, and I've worked very hard to make this the number one county in the state of Missouri, and I'm very, very much open to any dialogue. I think that effective communication is critical in any aspect of our lives. So as it relates to this current project, after that initial meeting, I think it's important to understand that we really didn't hear anything until approximately April, where we had a Zoom call, where the total project cost was presented to the county. And I spoke to Mr. Childers and I said, Steve, that's great. It's good to know, but what is the county's participation in that? And then there was a meeting, I think, in July. And then another one in October before we finally, me personally, got solid numbers as to what was expected from the county. And then as late as December 3rd was the last time. And I think it's important, from the county's perspectives, is to understand that at no time have we not wanted to be a willing participant in this project. Even on a personal note, I will I think anybody that really knows me knows how passionate I am about bringing our community together at the square, as I remember it, from a few years ago, before the farmers market was ended on the square. So I'm all for downtown. I, I think what HRD is doing is fabulous. So to think that the county wouldn't be a participant is really beyond comprehension, as far as I'm concerned. Trying to look at my notes here. Let's talk specifically about the sidewalks. Again, I was emphasized again, that has been a project of, a personal project of mine for three years. I don't know where the dialogue comes in, that the county's not going to, the county's not this, the county's not that. It's counterproductive, and I have worked very hard to create a community environment and healthy relationship. So and yes, I will say this, that when the sidewalks, and we will install the sidewalks, I will go on record saying those sidewalks will be installed. But those will be installed at a price that's comparable to the market, not what was presented to us. It's simple as that. I know what those sidewalks will cost because I had had them. I had cost estimates as early as last week on those. So what I was being asked to pay is just not good use of taxpayers' dollars. It's just not. Moving forward, I would like to say something on behalf of Mike Robertson, your Eastern County Commissioner, that he asked me to share with you tonight, and that is the county has shared hundreds of thousands of dollars of the CARES funding with the city. Now, if you really look closely at the rules that were given to us, you'll under, you'll see clearly that we could have done anything from giving the money back, which probably wouldn't, wouldn't have been a bad deal, to sharing it with the city. We didn't know. It was a moving target. But Mike wanted me to emphasize that he found it very offensive that at no time did anyone make an attempt to say, hey, thanks for sharing those monies with us. Now, in closing, I will tell you one thing. I think it's important to ask a question if any of you, any of the Board of Aldermen knows the history of the cost-sharing project that the county has engaged in with the city.
On what project?
You pick one, any of the major projects. Do you know the county's participation in those?
Well, and this is Rick. I'll speak in behalf of, I can't give you exact numbers. I know that you have agreed on the Riverside Bridge. I can't tell you what the numbers are off the top of my head, and I know that you've agreed to be a participant at some point in the TDD, which is yet to, at the mill, which is yet to be finalized, but beyond that, I can't say.
Well, for the sake of argument, I just want to share with the Board of Aldermen that the 65 and CC project was a cost share with MoDOT and the county and the city. MoDOT's contribution was $4.4 million. The county's participation was $4.4 million. The city's contribution, which by the way, that project is inside of city limits, was $29,000. Now, let's go back to sales tax cost shares since 2014. Since 2014, the county has cost shared just in sales tax revenue, $915,000. The TDD for the Finley Farms, $231,000. The Riverside Bridge project, $1.3 million of the county's money. Ozark Special Road District was a $900,000 grant, and the city's was $825,000, to include our highway engineers' costs, which if you were to hire someone, would have been welded in six figures. So I say that just to kind of put a perspective on, I know Aldermen are like commissioners. They come and they go. This is the research I've done, and this is just for the top big ones. And so in closing, I just want you to know that I don't feel it's appropriate to take questions and get into a lengthy conversation, but I would encourage everyone, everyone, to reach out to me or one of the other commissioners. My email is ralphphillips@christiancountymo.gov. I'll say it again. R. Phillips, I may have misspoke, rphillips@christiancountymo.gov. Our number's 417-582-4300. I just want the chance to sit down at the table and talk to people about what really goes on. But I can, I feel very confident that this county has contributed probably more to the partnerships in Ozark than probably anyone else throughout our community. And I'm focused on our community, not one entity over the other. Again, I appreciate you, Mayor, giving me the opportunity to speak tonight, and I want to close by wishing everyone a blessed Christmas because 2020, I'm ready to get over with. So bless you all, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Mr. Phillips has indicated to me this afternoon, I see that he has already signed off, but he indicated to me this afternoon, just as he did right now to each of you, that he's very open to discussion with you individually, but he didn't want to take questions tonight. So that is the way it is. He is already gone. So we will move on to first reading bills. And I guess somebody could, if somebody's got a comment, they can make it, but otherwise, Mr. Schaefer?
I missed the morning meeting, so I'm not really sure what just happened. Perhaps I'll talk to you later. I guess.
Probably the best way to handle that, you certainly could talk to me or Steve or anybody else that was there, but I'm going to ask Samantha to send you a link if you want to listen to it.
Great.
But probably not, not the whole meeting, but just the portion that dealt with the the downtown project.
Thank you.
Sometime you'll, sometime soon you'll have that.
I appreciate it.
Everybody else was there and heard it. Okay, Bill 3210, Mr. Poston?
Yes, Your Honor, I move that we place Bill 3210 on its first reading.
Motion made by Poston, seconded by Smith to put Bill 3210 on its first reading. All in favor? Ms. Galloway?
An ordinance approving the preliminary plat for Eagle Springs Phase 2 and 3, generally located at the intersection of North Eagle Springs Drive and West Longview Road, north of Phase 1.
Okay, Mr. Smith, would you like to, any comments you'd like to make or discuss that?
Yes, the applicant has made application for the preliminary plat for Phase 2 and 3 of Eagle Springs subdivision, which lies just north of the existing Phase 1 off of Longview Road. During the Planning Zoning Commission meeting, it was noted that all the staff comments and third-party comments had been satisfied. The application does conform to the conference of plan and the existing zoning of the property. The city does have adequate utility capacity to serve the development, and the existing roads are adequate to serve the development, along with the connections to the west, north, and south. A traffic study was submitted and approved by staff and third-party engineers. The stormwater will be required to be supplied to staff for review once that time is appropriate, when they got the stormwater designed for the subdivision. The development is dedicating a trail easement that kind of bisects the property in Phase 2 area. That goes from to the east to the west and is part of the OTO linked trail plan. There were no oppositions from the emergency service providers, as we reached out to each one of those to to make sure that they're okay with the proposal. There is a pool in associate improvements that's identified in Phase 2 of this project, and those items will be completed with Phase 2, along with the required buffer yards along the eastern property line due to the neighboring zoning to the east of industrial. Those buffer yards will be completed with the construction improvements of the appropriate phase at those times. Also, staff did get approval from the Ozark Special Road District. They had no oppositions to this, this proposal. Staff did support the request for the preliminary plat, and the Planning Zoning Commission did unanimously vote to approve this to the Board of Aldermen. And the applicant is, represent the applicant, John Sayer, is on the Zoom meeting. If you guys have additional questions.
Hey, are there any board comments before we hear from the applicant? All right, Mr. Sayer, would you like to say anything on behalf of the applicant?
I don't have anything additional than, than what Cameron has already said. We just appreciate the opportunity.
Okay, Sam, there are no people in the holding room. Okay. We, there is nobody else here except us in the conference room, so nobody out there. Is there anybody else? I'm looking, only city staff that's on the Zoom call, so there won't be any, any in-person comments or Zoom comments. So if there are no other comments, we'll just, we'll just hold this over to the next meeting in 2021. Okay, Mr. Smith, Bill 3211.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we place Bill 3211 on its first reading by title and short description only, please.
Grab a second. Motion made by Smith, seconded by Poston, put Bill 3211 on its first reading by title only. All in favor? Ms. Galloway?
An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, authorizing the city to enter into a contract with Show Me Christian County for services.
All right, I'm sure that Steve can answer questions, but we have Ms. Sykes. I'm looking for, there you are. Andrea, would you like to speak to this?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor and Board. Just as a reminder, in the meetings that I've had with all of you, this contract really puts into an agreement the work that's been going on by the leaders of this community and those across the county since 2012 or 2013. As a brief reminder, the goals and actions that are outlined in this contract and were originally identified in the TIP Strategies Report, and then once the organization got off the ground and up and running, that was revisited again by the Board of Directors through a strategic plan and then also reaffirmed by Community Growth Strategies. Continuing, and we wanted to make sure that we really had this refined, we did a feasibility study for this funding and the budget that we put to the work that's identified through opportunity funding, where we surveyed over 60 leaders throughout the region, and then a refinement committee in the fall of 2019, and that refinement committee really put together the key measurements that are identified that you see in this agreement, and the action steps that are identified are ongoing. So this is our five-year action plan. This is an an overarching plan, and of course, does not encompass everything that our organization focuses on. However, you can find all of those activities under any of these action steps, and if you have specific questions, I'd be happy to elaborate. This five-year plan has been vetted, as I mentioned, by over 50 volunteers throughout the region, including a lot of stakeholders in the county and in Ozark. Have one, Mayor Rick Gardner, being one of those as sitting on our Board of Directors, and then also Mr. Torgerson, when he was an Alderman, was also on a refinement committee and looked at this as well. So happy to provide any context. Again, this is the same scope of work that we are proposing to put in the same agreements with the county and then also the city of Nixa, and the oversight again will continually be done through the Board of Directors. So the city of Ozark does have a voting voice and then also an advisory voice for the direction and the fulfillment of this agreement. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, let me, let me clarify something. We want to open it up to questions to Andrea, but but the first time she spoke was at the staff direction to actually explain the bill. Okay? So to, to follow the procedure, the next thing would be board comments and then any applicant comments. So if there are questions or comments from the board, please speak now. Mr. Poston?
Yes, Your Honor. So I've, Ms. Sykes has spent a fair amount of time with me over the last few weeks or last few months, I guess, actually, trying to explain this to me, making sure I got it. And I still have a bit of hesitation, and I want to be clear on what my hesitation is. I have no issues supporting regionalism. It is in the best interest of Ozark that Chadwick and Sparta and Billings have healthy economies. Those folks spend their money here. Let's make sure that they've got good jobs to go to. My concern becomes, again, the growth of it. So we've had about three years now of the $25,000 a year, where the goal of the organization was to be a very small team of highly skilled folks that would go out and business attraction. That's what it was. It was business attraction. Go, go bring new business to the region. You know, hopefully it, that business hits in Ozark, but if it landed in Nixa or wherever, as long as it's in Christian County, that was the goal. Go, go get business. And according to Ms. Sykes, over that period of time, we brought about $25 million of investment back into the county. I'm not 100% sure if that's good or bad, but we spent 20, we died $1,000, we spent $75,000 bucks. We got $25 million in, in development. Now, we're gonna, we're gonna change the plan a little bit. We're gonna keep doing some business retention, but we're gonna stack onto that several other layers of services. Some of these appear to me to be more or less business consulting, helping them write some business plans, disaster plans, economic recovery plans, this and that. We're not a rich city by any means. So at the rate we've already spent the money, that $75,000 on a 1% general revenue is, make sure to check my math, it is around $7.5 million in taxable sales. So in other words, if we're looking at an ROI, we needed $7.5 million in new sales to offset the 75,000 that's been spent. And we're gonna double that, so we're now, we're gonna be looking at around $10 million a year in new sales, or sorry, excuse me, $5 million a year in new sales to hit a balanced ROI. If you push that out across all of our funds, it gets a little bit better, because I'm, again, I was just looking at the general. If you push it out across all of our funds, you need about $2 million a year to hit a net, to hit a median ROI, to hit a neutral ROI. And so that becomes my, my contention here. Not that the goals are not worthy, not that Ms. Sykes can't pull this off, but what is the role of the city in using taxpayers' dollars to provide free consulting services to for-profit businesses? I kind of made the point the other day, because I knew this was coming when I was asking about the park during the budget discussion. We can't buy, we can't buy a playground. We can't buy a new swing set. But we're getting ready to double the amount of money we spend on economic development so that we can provide new services to these businesses. And again, one more time, this is not a continuation of what we've this is not a continuation of the MOU we've had. This is an expansion of it, a doubling of the budget and a increase in, in overhead and et cetera. That increase in overhead means that five years from now, when this contract's up, they're gonna, this, it's never gonna be zero-based. $50,000 a year becomes the new baseline. For five years from now, we're not debating 50. We're gonna be debating 75 or 100 or 125. I've got some real concerns about that. And while I have had individuals, including Ms. Sykes, tout the, the good of the plan or the good of the strategies, what I, the argument that hasn't been made to me yet is that it's the city's obligation to fund these things. I know that Show Me has a lot of private investors. That makes perfect sense. It makes 100% sense to me that some of the, that is in the best interest of a, of a financial institution to ensure that those, those businesses that they're putting money into have these, these types of disaster recovery plans. That makes 100% sense to me. But is it the job of, of the taxpayer to provide free consulting services to for-profit business? And I'm not there yet. That's my comments for now, Your Honor.
Okay. Other comments from the board? Any, any questions or comments from the board? All right, if not, Ms. Sykes, would you like to reply to that as, is your, in your turn as applicant comments?
Certainly. One thing, just for clarification standpoint, Nathan, you mentioned three years at $25,000. This is actually the fifth year of that original MOU, so the organization will be three years old in March of 2021, but it did take the startup funds before staff was hired and before we were really able to address these things. Also, you mentioned the original goal was a small-team focus on business attraction. I think Mr. Childers can also speak to this. That may have been some of the original vernacular or explanation, but that's why I wanted to make sure and clarify. These goals actually tie back to TIP Strategies. So while attraction is part of our focus, it's always been, as approved from 2013, to spend the majority of our time on business retention and expansion. So that hasn't changed. And the attraction that we have seen in the projects that we have assisted with have really been a reaction of the growth already happening in this area. So we do assist through pre-development, and there's a great value to those businesses. Specifically, the ones that we mentioned, they could have landed in other areas, and we are able to walk them through that and show them the value and the benefit of being here in Christian County. But when you truly look at investing for attraction purposes, that is a very expensive game. That's when you are courting site selectors and going to their locations, creating these large-scale marketing photos and things like that of sites that you have available, and those are not activities that we have done. And quite frankly, they're not activities that we're prepared to do because we don't have sites. And that's why the attraction, this contract really signifies the change between reacting to our growth and being proactive about our growth. So I just wanted to outline and clarify that. And then with the consulting services, you are correct. That is a big benefit of what we provide and what we're able to do for our existing business community. And I would really clarify and point out that tax base is only able to be there because your businesses are successful. We are a sales tax-based community, and therefore, it takes payroll generating into this economy and more jobs of those that live locally in order to spend those dollars locally. Because we do have some tourism, however, we are not capitalizing on the tourism factor of being on Highway 65, largely as a community, and that's something that we hope to increase as well through promotion, not through marketing promotion, but promoting this as a destination, promoting this as an area that's successful to do business in. So to answer your question, I think, is it the responsibility of the city? I think it is absolutely the responsibility of the city to make sure that they can do everything possible to secure that tax base and also increase it. And when you look statistically, the majority of your new jobs that are created, 75 to 90% And when you look statistically, the majority of your new jobs that are created, 75 to 90% of those are actually going to come from your businesses that are already in existence. So it makes statistical sense to invest in your existing business community, making them healthier, because every job that they create, you're getting a larger return on your investment than you are if you were to extend the dollars and bring in a large business or a brand new business. So I hope that helps. Um, that's something that, again, point of clarification and maybe Mr. Childers can go back. I know I, I was not here. Um, I was not on staff, the original, when we were formed. But, um, the goals haven't changed. The goals have stayed the same and that's because the work is still there and needs to be done. And they need to be focused on more heavily, which is why we are increasing. The last comment that I have, um, it is not my goal at all to come back to you in five years and request 75, 100 or 125,000. And actually, if you will look at my track record as a leader through these organizations, when I was the Director for the Chamber of Commerce in the three amendments that were passed under the contract that was approved, um, under my leadership, it actually had the operating budget and what was going back to that organization decreasing every year. And that is why we are really working diligently throughout 2021 to increase our private investment so that it lessens the burden on the city. While there is still a big benefit, we want to make this larger portion of our budget come from our private investors than we do from our public investors. So with that, um, again, happy to answer or clarify, but I just wanted to comment on those points.
All right, let, uh, any other comments from the board? Well, let, let me make a comment. Uh, I've been on the Board of Director since its inception as mayor. That's the way the, uh, the document, the articles of incorporation, uh, read and that how, that is how, is that the mayor would be on the board. Steve has been at all of the meetings and I don't remember what that title is Andrea for the, the mayor. Doesn't, it's not a voting seat on the board, but he is, uh, is on the board.
He's on our advisory board.
Do what?
The advisory board.
Advisory board. Thank you. That's the word I was looking for. So we have, we have both been on it from absolutely day one. And I can tell you that in my opinion, everything that Andrea has said is accurate. Uh, I, I do know from, uh, everything that I have heard, I know a whole lot more about economic development now than I did four years ago. But I think I knew a fair amount about it before, is that business retention and expansion is incredibly important. We, we are just not in a place with available sites or, or people that, uh, landowners that, that want to work with us to where we can have a place for people to go. We're not like Republic. And so we have to concentrate on growing the businesses that we have. And so that's a large part of what they do. So that's just my take on it. We're not gonna vote tonight. We're gonna hold it over. But we want to make sure that if there are any questions or further discussion, that we get all of that done tonight. So let me ask one more time. Any further comments from, uh, from the board? Mr. Poston.
Yes, Your Honor. I just got one more. Um, again, fully support business, uh, business retention and attraction. But the last I looked, I was trying to pull it up right now. The last I looked, unemployment in Christian County was 3.8%. That would generally be considered zero. I mean, that's, that's, that's normal unemployment. I can't believe unemployment's actually that low right now. Uh, but that, that's very good unemployment rate. We've also got a convergence right now where house prices are going through the roof because of demand right here. More and more people coming. And so I'm just wondering, as we attract these businesses and we continue to drive real estate prices through the roof, home, home prices through the roof, a new home right now, uh, are selling somewhere near 350 to $420,000. I'm not sure what entry level jobs buying those homes. So I'm just wondering, what is the goal? Are we going for zero unemployment? I mean, are we, are we just gonna keep, are we just more? Is that the, I don't. I've read the tip strategies. I saw the plan. Um, I've read all of our plans. And we've seemed to have, and I don't, again, don't fully understand it. We really sunk our teeth into this one and we're making a lot of effort to bring this entire plan to life, to spend money on it. While other plans, um, don't seem to be getting the same sort of love. And so I'm just, I'm trying to, there is a part of me that feels that this is a cart before the horse scenario. Ms. Seitz brought up, uh, you know, that this is being a sales tax-based city. Absolutely right. I have just tried to wrap my head around this the last few days or last few weeks, the notion that on one hand, we have absolutely have to have businesses because they are driving our economy. They are driving all the improvements, uh, that the taxpayers want. And yet at the end of the day, it is the taxpayers' money. And even if they tell us, no, 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 we're not gonna give you anymore, but we still want more. We're not having those conversations, but we're still just gonna go ahead. We're gonna double this budget. You know, Ms. Seitz and I have talked a lot about this. At the end of the day, I think Andrea knows that she's got nothing to worry about. This is gonna pass next, or two weeks. I'm, I'm trying to draw some attention to a pretty important issue that we just, just, we're just, we're just going right through. Again, $25,000 a year for the last five, $50,000 a year coming up, $150,000 is what the city, city spent on the, the report to begin with. And still don't have a new swing set or a new slide or a new jungle gym. I, I questioning our priorities a little bit here. And that's, and that's all I've got for tonight, Your Honor.
No, no, it's, uh, we want everybody to discuss, uh, to the point where they're done. You did make one comment though, Mr. Poston. You, you used the term business retention and, uh, attraction. And it's, it's really, the, the portion that Andrea is talking about is business retention and expansion. So, um, I'm not trying to, to correct you for any other reason other than to understand that, that a good part of their efforts is helping our businesses grow. And, uh, you know, if there's a, uh, an employment issue with that, why, you know, those businesses will just have to do a better job of attracting the, the, uh, the help that's available. And maybe that help would come if we had a, you know, a, the kind of park that you're in favor of. I, I don't know. But, but basically we need to help those businesses because they're the ones that are gonna grow. So, uh, other comments? I don't want to stop this until we're done. Okay, not hearing any. We will hold Bill, uh, oh, yes, ma'am.
Um, yes, I just wanted to, um, to note, Mr. Poston, you are correct. Um, our unemployment is definitely low. And Christian County often has the lowest unemployment rate in the region. But our residents are not gainfully employed in our county. And that's where the difference lies. Because the, those sales tax generating businesses, in order to recruit more of those to this area, they need that density. And we don't have a daytime density. And because our single family spread, we don't even have that nighttime population and density. And so I think that's really, that was the original goal. That, um, fact alone, that 80%, we are in the bottom six counties across the state of Missouri for our loss of daytime population, for our migration. Um, and we're, we're late to this game. Several other areas were focusing on this 15, 20 years ago, many of them. Um, but that single fact alone is the catalyst that started to have our leaders across the county focus on this point. And, um, the, this plan, um, again, I, I truly believe in it because I know what it can do for the economy when focused on intentionally. Not just because of the studies, because I've been to other areas, spoken to peers across the state and across the US on what these intentional efforts have done for their communities. And I think this is the plan that enables all the others. This is the plan that when you focus on this intentionally and you have a balance and a healthy economy, you are able to provide those other things more holistically, um, in your community. So I just wanted to, to clarify, you're right. Um, everything that you've said is accurate. Uh, it's just the fact that if we don't intentionally focus on this, nothing else is possible, in my opinion.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, we will hold Bill 3211 over to the next meeting. And, uh, uh, Mr. Smith, I'm gonna ask you to take 3212 since Mr. Galloway is not here. So if you would please.
I got it, Your Honor. I move that we place Bill 3212 on its first reading by title and short description only, please.
Motion made by Smith, seconded by Flores to put Bill 3212 on its first reading. All in favor? This is Ms. Galloway.
An ordinance of the City of Ozark, Missouri, authorizing the city to enter into a developer agreement with Volleyball Beach Ozark LLC for certain storm sewer improvements.
All right, Mr. McCart, would you please?
Yeah, Samantha, if I could share my screen.
All right.
Is it?
She's, yeah, you should be able to at this point.
All right, let's see. I'll try to, oh, okay. Let me, can you all see my map?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I would like to give you guys a little brief backstory and how this came to be. So, um, about a year ago, we had some residents that live at these two homes right here. They were having water, uh, pull pond up in the back of their yard. And there is a box right here that's coming right behind Orsland's up off of Highway NN. And we did some investigation and upon investigating in Cameron, all these storm sewer lines, we found that this line that runs down through here and eventually makes its way through, uh, around Turnberry Boulevard into this detention pond was undersized and it was failing. Uh, and the, the stormwater wasn't allowing to actually get through there. So it was just backing up and flooding out these two residents here. And about the same time we made this discovery, um, Volleyball Beach and Ozark, they started pulling permits and they had to, uh, they had to address their stormwater as well. So we made plans to come in here and fix this. And then they wanted to tie onto this right here. So we found this is a good way to make a, uh, you know, develop a partnership with, with a developer coming in and trying to, you know, build a business in, in Ozark. Um, and since we were already gonna be in there disturbing this, uh, these two residents here and then tearing up the street to upsize the line. And then by them tying on that, the, the line size would then have to be increased again. Um, so by, you know, building this partnership, we're only having to get in there once. It's saving the city, um, close to 42% of the cost of the project. And it's also saving a lot of money to the developers that come in. It just, it's a great partnership. Um, it works for both entities and it also works for the residents of Turnberry. So that's kind of the backstory and how it came to be. It just perfect timing and it just, I mean, it just, in our, in public work size, it's really a no-brainer and, and joining efforts with this developer. So is there any questions?
Any questions from the board? Okay, uh, if, if not, uh, I don't see anybody, uh, from Beach Volleyball. So, uh, yes, uh, yeah, we do need to expedite this. I was, so I just want to make sure everybody that has a chance for, that wants to speak has. So are, are there any, any comments, any further comments that need to be made? All right, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we place Bill 3212 on its second reading by title and short description only, please.
Motion made by Smith, seconded by Flores, put Bill 3212 on its second reading. All in favor? Ms. Galloway.
An ordinance of the City of Ozark, Missouri, authorizing the city to enter into a developer agreement with Volleyball Beach Ozark LLC for certain storm sewer improvements.
Okay, uh, any further questions? If not, roll call vote, please. Oh, I'm sorry. We need to move, I'm sorry. Thank you. Need a motion to adopt.
Your Honor, I move that we adopt Bill 3212 as ordinance 20-082.
Need a second. Motion made by Smith, seconded by Flores again to adopt Bill 3212 as ordinance 20-082. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Flores?
Aye.
Alderman Poston?
Aye.
Alderman Galloway is absent. Alderman Schaper?
Aye.
Alderman Alder?
Aye.
We have five ayes votes. Motion carries.
Okay, very fine. Uh, Mr. Poston, 3213.
Yes, Your Honor. I move that we place Bill 3213 on its first reading.
Motion made by Alderman Poston, seconded by Smith, put Bill 3213 on its first reading. All in favor? Ms. Galloway?
An ordinance of the City of Ozark, Missouri, authorizing the city to enter into a developer agreement with Creative One Mobile Electronics.
Okay, Mr. Childers?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you may all know, uh, Creative Audio, Creative Audio is one of the businesses that Show Me Christian County worked with to open its first phase. Since that first phase, Creative Audio has seen amazing growth and they are already moving on to Phase Two of their project. In order to allow them to move forward with Phase Two, they need to connect to a more stable water source. So the plan is for the water main on the west side of Highway 65 to be extended under Highway 65 to the western boundary of that property so that Phase Two can continue to be built. Now, the timing is the tricky part of that. The developer recognizes that they are moving forward and building in the wintertime. Obviously, we all know that that's very important so that you can continue to have your footing, your foundation, your slab and everything moving forward. They also recognize that it is essential that they have the proper fire flow and the proper sprinkler system in order to be able to open and receive a certificate of occupancy for Phase Two. We thought it was important that we put something in writing that, where the city and the developer recognized that the developer was gonna be allowed to move forward, but only move forward at their risk in that if the proper water improvements were not completed and available to pass inspection for Phase Two, then the city would not issue the certificate of occupancy until such time that water could be, uh, approved by the fire department. So what this does, it is allowed for Phase Two of Creative Audio to move forward and continue building at their risk, fully knowing that they are trying to get the water main done in time. But in case that doesn't happen, we just want to make sure that they recognize that the City of Ozark will not be allowing them to occupy Phase Two until that water is there. So we wanted to make sure that we memorialize that in a developer's agreement to allow business to continue, but keep our public, uh, our health and safety of that building, uh, in check. Uh, does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Poston.
Yes, I have, uh, I've got a couple. Um, so Phase One, so the, the, the other building is done. It's occupied. Their business as usual right now, right?
Yes, sir. They do have a business, uh, registration and they have a certificate of occupancy on Phase One.
Okay. And just so I'm clear, that occupied building has sprinklers right now, just low pressure?
Cameron, you might be able to answer this better than me. Um, but, uh, the Phase One of Creative Audio has the necessary, has met the necessary building requirements to have a certificate of occupancy on there. Mr. Smith, do you have a, a more accurate answer?
Yes, uh, Phase One was actually constructed where they installed the sprinkler system in the building. However, it was not hooked up to a water main because the existing main, I believe, is a two-inch main. At that time of Phase One, the fire department did have an agreement and still with Creative regarding fighting fire that they'd have to provide water by a truck because the sprinkler system was not hooked up. The understanding was when they go to Phase Two, that's when the water main would have to be completed so that the buildings could be sprinkled with the fire service, before the fire service. So in summary, the sprinkler system is installed in Phase One. It's just not hooked to a, a water main at this time.
Okay. And, and the fire department knows this? They're aware of this?
Yes, uh, back when the, the design was in process for Phase One, the fire department has an agreement letter that, that I, I, I believe that, uh, did sign that letter with the fire department, that they understand that if in doubt there's a fire, that the fire department is not liable because it cannot supply adequate firefighting capacity because of the existing water main and the building is not sprinkled. So yes, they are.
Sorry, Cameron, were you done?
Yes, they are aware of that. And then I will add that the fire department has signed off on this agreement that's in front of you guys as well this evening. Yes, they are aware of that, and then I will add that the fire department has signed off on this agreement that's in front of you guys as well this evening.
Do we have a copy, and this is the Callaway question, do we have a copy of that letter between the fire department and Creative on file?
I don't know that she has a copy of that, but I, I know I've seen that letter. I suspect I do have a copy from when we permitted Phase One, but I definitely can't get that letter from the Fire Marshal, Don Gregory.
I'd like to have that handy. And Ms. Callaway, do we not have any liability here?
The, I haven't seen the letter from the fire department, but if they have agreed to this, then I'm not sure that it, related to Phase One, that there's liability. But that's not something I've specifically analyzed, no.
Do we, and not that this is going to matter, I'm just curious, do we happen to know how many people work at Creative at that particular location?
Ms. Seitz possibly might know that as well, but I, I want to say off the top of my head, there's about fifteen people there.
Okay, I mean, this, I was worried about there being dozens in that building, but you know, if, if the fire department is going to take the responsibility for this, we can move forward, although this makes me nervous.
Well, that, to, to just clarify as well, moving forward with this agreement now is a better scenario than we're in today. So they will be building Phase Two, but they will not occupy Phase Two. They already are occupying Phase One, based on the previous understanding.
That really is the nature of this agreement. The reason why we wanted to memorialize this is so we didn't have another situation like we did in Phase One where a separate agreement had to be made by the fire department. Now the developer is fully aware and has signed off on, as well as the fire district has signed off on, that no certificate of occupancy shall be allowed on Phase Two before this sprinkler system is connected to the water main. So we're eliminating what happened in Phase One by this agreement. As Mr. Smith said, it's a much better situation than, than what we previously had.
And just one last question, do we have a way to make sure, to, to catch this quicker, to stop this from happening again? Letting a building be built and occupied without it being, having a fire suppression system? Mr. Childers, that would have to anybody?
Yeah, not to speak out of, this was specifically because of American Water. And so I believe Mr. Smith can really attest to this. If it were on City Utilities, it would have been required in Phase One. This was an obstacle that we uncovered before they ever purchased the property. And American Water had talked about and had sent letters before they began construction in Phase One that they were looking at the potential of expanding services, but they didn't have a timeline to that. Which is why I think the fire department was able to look at that. Everything per Phase One is up to code, is my understanding, but it's been the, it's not our water, not our, our system.
All right, any, any further comments or questions on this? Ms. Alder?
Did I miss who's paying for the water, for it to be bored under the highway?
No, we didn't, we didn't talk about that. And that is actually going to come before the Board of Alderman in probably the second meeting in January. And really, it's, it's sort of a win-win situation. And what I mean by that is that the developer or the owner of the property is needing an eight-inch water main that will connect to our water plane on the west side of Highway 65. But recognizing that we have future desire to be able to expand to the north and to the south with a water main to service other property on the east side of Highway 65, the Public Works Department is working with their engineers to upsize that line. And what that means is that even though Creative Audio may only need an eight-inch main, if we're going to go to the extent of allowing the connection to our service on the west side of the road, we want to be able to bring over a twelve-inch main that can service more than just Creative Audio. So what Ms. Callaway is working on with our Public Works Department, Assistant Public Works Director, I believe, is the actual language that will allow for the agreement of which entity is financing which part of, of that water line. So the developer is responsible for bringing over the eight-inch water main. You will see a developer's agreement, I guess I could call it a developer's cost share agreement, if you will, that will further explain our contribution to upsizing that from an eight to a twelve. So I hope that answers your question. There's just more to come in the second meeting of, of January.
That was a great question, Heather. Go ahead.
Yeah, so, so we can't, there's no way that we can get them the water that they need coming from the, on the east side?
It is a very difficult situation, just as Ms. Seitz had talked about. There is a pocket in the city of Ozark that is serviced by American Water, which is a third-party utility company. And right now, American Water who services that area, I think we call that Spring Valley, don't we, Ms. Smith? We call that Spring Valley. And right now, the, the people that are served by American Water are served because American Water buys water from the city of Ozark via a bulk meter and then turns around and sells that water via service lines and individual meters to the people that are in that Spring Valley area. So really, it's not our service area once you go further to the east of the western boundary line of Creative Audio. So we're just bringing it over where the bulk meter will now be set on the western boundary of Creative Audio, which is actually the eastern boundary of the sixty-five highway right away. And we will be able to extend north, and we will be able to extend south, but anything that goes to the east will still be in the service area of American Water. Ms. Callaway, if I didn't explain that correctly, I did the best I could. So I hope that was accurate.
All right, any, Mr. Poston, go ahead.
Just to clarify, I'm going to make sure I understood everything Ms. Childers and Ms. Seitz said to Heather's question. So Ms. Alder asked about who was paying for it, and it was said that they knew about this before they bought the property, before they built Phase One, before all this happened, it was known that there was a water issue there. The project was built anyway, and now the city's going to be, is potentially going to spend some additional money to run a larger pipe than just what they need for themselves under the road. Is that correct?
Well, it is correct, but I want to make sure that you're getting the, the benefit of the point here is Creative Audio needs water. They're going to extend that water from the west side of Highway 65 with an eight-inch main over to the east side of sixty-five. We're not opposed to that, and actually, but by that eight-inch main isn't going to help the city of Ozark in any way if it just goes over to service more American Water companies or service Creative Audio. So trying to find a benefit that's greater than just Creative Audio to the city of Ozark, the city of Ozark is going to take this opportunity to upsize a line being paid for a hundred percent by Creative Audio, the developer, that's eight-inch, and the difference between eight-inch and a twelve-inch is what the city of Ozark is going to pay for, which we would have otherwise not run into Highway 65 at this time to allow for the expansion to the north and to the south to open up other available land that is outside of the American Water service area.
And I get that, and I'm going to ask in a second just for somebody to ballpark me what that cost might be, I'm not yet. But again, we wouldn't be spending any money if, if, if a developer that had known in advance, or if the developer had acted on information that they did have in advance not to build on that site or to, to prep that site properly with water before it was built. Am I still, am I still wrong? We were, we're kind of being pushed into a, in a situation to spend some money. Am I, am I wrong?
Well, I, I'll say my last thing and I'll go to Mr. McCart. There are other options, but when you look at the other options, again, this is the one that benefits the city of Ozark the greatest. We're not being pushed into anything. We recognize this as an opportunity because otherwise we would not be able to service the hundreds of acres that lie to the north of this property, which we've all talked about being probably, it, it isn't our tier one and that will probably be developed in the next five years. But Mr. McCart, I'll, I'll turn it over to you to get more specifics on the public work side.
Yeah, I just want to point out that the developer knew the situation when they first built Phase One, and there was a plan to extend it from the east, all the way from Hoover's Mill to Creative Audio, and they were going to partner with a development called Daxton Ridge, which lies in between those two areas. And in the, in the time it took to build Phase One and move on to Phase Two, Daxton Ridge hit a wall and it didn't happen, and they couldn't acquire the easements necessary to extend from the east all the way to Creative Audio. So everything that was planned and, and to go that route hit a wall, and they had to go back to the drawing board essentially. And that's when they came up with the, under the sixty-five bore, and then we saw that opportunity. And it's no different than what we're, we're doing with the Bill Number Three with Ozark Beach Volleyball and finding a way to cost share with a developer and extend the utilities and benefit both parties. So I just, well, they, they were aware of it. There was a situation that it all fell through, it had to go back to the beginning, so I just want to make you aware of that.
Yes, and to clarify, it's, this is not at the developer's request. Again, it's trying to maximize the opportunity, but just wanted to clarify that they did not approach the city to spend these funds. And as Mr. McCart pointed out, we're fully prepared from the time they purchased the property to spend all of the dollars to extend that from the east and are doing the lion's share of the extension from the west.
Mr. Flores?
I mean, I, I think that if we have a, if we already know the developer is going to basically be paying for his own line to go under the highway, we get to sell them water with that, isn't that correct? And they're going to, they're going to, you know, pay for a hundred percent of their cost, and we think it's an opportunity for us to find a way to piggyback on top of that to be able to service a wider area there that we currently, right now, can't. I'm going to assume that that would be cheaper than us going in later on and then boring a second line. You know, because I'm, I'm going to say that every time you have to go in there and core another line, it's probably going to cost a lot more than if you just expand the line you're coring once. And so I would say that if, if we know that we're going to be able to do that, and this is an opportunity to do that, well, then that would make sense. I, I also would say that if we know, if he's under the, he knows that if he gets this permitted, he continues to build, he can't occupy that second half unless he does get this cord underneath, which it sounds like we're all in agreeance on how that's going to work. Then I, I don't see any issue in holding them up on construction right now, knowing that they can't occupy the building until they, until they hook up the water, until they get their sprinkler system going. So that, that is just my two cents.
All right, other comments? All right, all right, Mr. Poston? They're asking to expedite this. Well, we would need somebody.
I'll sponsor, Your Honor, it's, it's going to, I'll sponsor. So, Your Honor, I move that we place Bill 3213 on its second reading.
Motion made by Poston, seconded by Smith, put Bill 3213 on its second reading. All in favor? Ms. Callaway?
An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, authorizing the city to enter into a developer agreement with Creative One Mobile Electronics.
All right, Ms. Poston?
Your Honor, I move that we adopt Bill 3213 as ordinance 20-083.
Motion made by Alderman Poston, seconded by Alderman Smith to adopt Bill 3213 as ordinance 20083. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Alder?
Aye.
Alderman Flores?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Callaway is absent. Alderman Poston?
Aye.
Alderman Schaefer?
Aye.
We have five aye votes, motion carries.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Smith, Bill 3214.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we place Bill 3214 on its first reading by title and short description only, please.
Is there a second? Motion made by Alderman Smith and seconded by Alderman Poston to put Bill 3214 on its first reading by title only. All in favor? Ms. Callaway?
An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, authorizing the city to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Christian County for maintenance of certain real property.
All right, Ms. Payne, would you please take over this?
Sure. This is the topic that we discussed during the breakfast meeting. This will basically hit that off the county so that we are responsible for the Riverside Ridge property. And, sorry, I'm going to put this down. It looks like Heather can't hear you very well. If you guys have any questions, I'll answer them, but this will basically take us a million and then rush out to keep that area at least through this first twelve months until dedicated by the county over to the city.
All right, any questions by the board? Okay, I think they've asked that this be expedited also. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we place Bill 3214 on its second reading by title and description only, please.
Motion made by Alderman Smith and seconded by Alderman Poston to put Bill 3214 on its second reading by title only. All in favor? Ms. Callaway?
An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, authorizing the city to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Christian County for maintenance of certain real property.
All right, any further comments or questions? All right, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we adopt Bill 3214 as ordinance 20-084.
Your second? Motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Poston to adopt Bill 3214 as ordinance 20084. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Alder?
Aye.
Alderman Poston?
Aye.
Alderman Callaway is absent. Alderman Flores?
Aye.
Alderman Schaefer?
Aye.
We have five aye votes, motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Smith, Bill 3215.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we place Bill 3215 on its first reading by title and description only, please.
Motion made by Alderman Smith and seconded by Alderman Poston to put Bill 3215 on its first reading. All in favor? Ms. Callaway?
An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, authorizing the city to enter into the Governor's Transportation Cost Share Agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission.
Okay, Mr. Childers?
Yes, I think we've all talked about this before. You guys are all aware of, of what this was. This was a grant that we applied for back in 2019, and it was awarded to us. The state of Missouri had an amount of money that it was giving under a new program called the Governor's Cost Share Program, and it was for transportation projects that were specifically advanced economic development in an area. And so City of Ozark was one of those that were awarded, excuse me. And then all of a sudden, the pandemic hit and budgets changed at the state level, and actually, they rescinded those funds. Then they came back quickly after that and said, actually, the top three projects that were chosen previously will still be projects that we want to do, and Ozark was one of those projects. And so that's what this agreement is. The agreement sets forth a set amount of money that the city of Ozark would be able to obtain if we are to go forward with the projects. Certainly, I want to make a point that this is intricately tied to the formation of the Finley River TDD. But this is an agreement between the City of Ozark and the Missouri Highway Commission. So Ms. Callaway did a great job of navigating this and making sure we had the right language in here to ensure that we were as protected as we possibly could be in this sort of strange pandemic time right now. So I just want to say thank you to Amanda for doing that. You did a great job, and we've got the, this before you. So if you have any questions about any of those specifics, please let us know. Otherwise, we're recommending approval and expediting of the Governor's Cost Share with the Missouri Highway Department.
All right, board, comments or questions? This is, this is not a new topic, but certainly if you've got questions, why, let's discuss them now. All right, hearing done. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we place Bill 3215 on its second reading by title and description only, please.
Motion made by Alderman Smith and seconded by Alderman Poston to put Bill 3215 on its second reading by title only. All in favor? to put Bill three-two-one-five on its second reading by title only. All in favor? Ms. Callaway?
An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, authorizing the city to enter into the Governor's Transportation Cost Share Agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission.
Okay, any further comments or questions? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we adopt Bill three-two-one-five as ordinance two zero dash zero eight five.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Poston to adopt Bill three-two-one-five as ordinance two zero zero eight five. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Schaefer?
Aye.
Alderman Callaway is absent. Alderman Poston?
Aye.
Alderman Flores?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Alder?
Aye.
We have five aye votes. Motion carries.
Okay, the, the next item on the agenda is a resolution to adopt Alexei Pavlov to the Planning and Zoning Commission. You'll remember that he was appointed to fill a position that was vacant, and that, the time on that position has elapsed, so we need to reappoint him. He's agreed to do so, so Mr. Poston, I'll give that to you.
Your Honor, I move that we read Resolution nineteen fifty-three.
Motion made by Alderman Poston and seconded by Alderman Smith to read Resolution one-nine-five-three. All in favor? Ms. Callaway?
A resolution by the Board of Aldermen of the city of Ozark, Missouri, approving one reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, Mr. Poston?
Your Honor, I move that we adopt Resolution nineteen fifty-three.
Motion made by Alderman Poston, seconded by Alderman Smith to adopt Resolution nineteen fifty-three. Roll call vote, please.
I hope we don't need one.
No, we don't need one for a resolution, so hand vote. All in favor? Okay. Very good. All right, we'll now go to second reading bills. And Bill three-two-zero-one, Mr. Smith, would you take that for Mr. Callaway?
Yes, sir. Your Honor, I move that we place Bill three-two-zero-one on its second reading by title and description only, please.
Motion made by Alderman Smith and seconded by Alderman Poston to put Bill three-two-zero-one on its second reading. All in favor? Ms. Callaway?
An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, authorizing the city to enter into a contract with Greer Dirtworks LLC for utility boring services for public works.
All right, are there any further questions or comments about this bill from the board? Okay, if not, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we adopt Bill three-two-zero-one as ordinance two zero dash zero eight six.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Poston to adopt Bill three-two-zero-one as ordinance two zero zero eight six. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Callaway is absent. Alderman Schaefer?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Alder?
Aye.
Alderman Poston?
Aye.
Alderman Flores?
Aye.
We have five Alderman, we have five aye votes. Motion carries.
Okay. Bill three-two-zero-four, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we place Bill three-two-zero-four on its second reading by title and description only, please.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Poston to put Bill three-two-zero-four on its second reading by title only. All in favor? Ms. Callaway?
An ordinance adopting a budget for the city of Ozark, Missouri for the twenty-twenty-one fiscal year.
All right, any further comments or questions from the board? All right, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we adopt Bill three-two-zero-four as ordinance two zero dash zero eight seven.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Poston to adopt Bill three-two-zero-four as ordinance two zero zero eight seven. Roll call vote.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Poston?
Aye.
Alderman Schaefer?
Aye.
Alderman Flores?
Aye.
Alderman Alder?
Aye.
Alderman Callaway is absent. We have five aye votes. Motion carries.
Okay, Bill three-two-zero-six, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we place Bill three-two-zero-six on its
Wait a minute, no.
Three-two-zero-five, three-two-zero-five on its second reading by title and description only.
My fault. Just, okay, motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Poston to put Bill three-two-zero-four, three-two-zero-five, correction, three-two-zero-five on its second reading by title only. All in favor? All right, Ms. Callaway?
An ordinance amending the budget of the city of Ozark, Missouri for the twenty-twenty fiscal year.
All right, any further comments or questions? All right, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we adopt Bill three-two-zero-five as ordinance two zero dash zero eight eight.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Poston to adopt Bill three-two-zero-five as ordinance two zero zero eight eight. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Alder?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Schaefer?
Aye.
Alderman Poston?
Aye.
Alderman Callaway is absent. Alderman Flores?
Aye.
We have five aye votes. Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Smith, three-two-zero-six.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we place Bill three-two-zero-six on its second reading by title and description only, please.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Poston to put Bill three-two-zero-six on its second reading. All in favor? Ms. Callaway?
An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, approving the fee study establishing certain city fees.
All right, any further comments or questions on this bill? All right, if not, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we adopt Bill three-two-zero-six as ordinance two zero dash zero eight nine.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Poston to adopt Bill three-two-zero-six as ordinance two zero zero eight nine. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Schaefer?
Aye.
Alderman Flores?
Aye.
Alderman Poston?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Callaway is absent. Alderman Alder?
Aye.
We have five aye votes. Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Smith, three-two-zero-seven.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we place Bill three-two-zero-seven on its second reading by title and description only, please.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Poston to put Bill three-two-zero-seven on its second reading. All in favor? All right, Ms. Callaway?
An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, approving a development proposal submitted by the Finley River Redevelopment Corporation for redevelopment of an area generally located within the Finley River redevelopment area and authorizing the city to enter into a redevelopment agreement with said corporation, authorizing certain tax abatement for a portion of the Finley River redevelopment area.
Okay, any further questions or comments from the board about this? Okay, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we adopt Bill three-two-zero-seven as ordinance two zero dash zero nine zero.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Poston to adopt Bill three-two-zero-seven as ordinance two zero zero nine zero. Roll call vote.
Alderman Flores?
Aye.
Alderman Callaway is absent. Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Schaefer?
Aye.
Alderman Alder?
Aye.
Alderman Poston?
Aye.
We have five aye votes. Motion carries.
Okay, next on the agenda is report, various reports. Mr. Childers, you're first.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I really don't have anything in addition. I just want to say that we've, we've done a lot of work this year, and I want to thank the board for all their support. We've had a lot of bills, a lot of resolutions, and a lot of challenging topics. Thank you all very much for the dedication and the time that you give to this city. I know the community may not understand all the hours and the time that you put into the effort that you do, but, but your staff certainly does, and I, just again, I think we all appreciate you very much. Thank you for your dedication and have a very Merry Christmas. I know the meeting's not over, but that's really all I had to say. We've accomplished a lot, and these were big agendas in the last couple of months. Thanks for sticking in there with us.
All right, any comments from the board? Okay, we'll move on to Ms. Payne's report. Oh, I'm sorry, Heather. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
No, it's not okay, but if you were seeing the screen I was seeing, sometimes it's hard to see a hand. But anyway, you're up, and please go ahead.
I, I was just gonna say it's been quite a year, and it's been an interesting way to do the city's business through Zoom. So appreciate all the help with Samantha getting me technically informed. Thank you.
Well, it has been an interesting year, and I hope the next year will be different. I don't suppose it will be for several more months, but, but it has, it's been unusual, and it, I personally like it a lot more when we can see each other's faces and facial expressions, and I think it's a better way of communication. You've heard me say that before, but it is what it is. And thank you all for, for doing what's necessary. So I'm looking at the screen. I don't see anybody else wanting to speak. Unless Heather, you want to say something again? No, I'm kidding. Okay, Ms. Payne?
I, to my report, I just wanted to say, like, we had a really rough year. We shut down the OC for over six weeks, and we're still at about, when we did this report, we were still at about eighty-two percent of our membership numbers. So thank you to all the OC members for staying with us, and the staff are working through it. We've come a long way. Programs have been relatively good. We've kind of pushed through this summer with summer grant programs, and we're able to offer that to parents as an option. We didn't have any COVID cases and things were better because we were outside. Our numbers are down a little bit for basketball, because it isn't in your sport. At that point, basketball broke, we didn't ready to start, so it's a little bit down. But our Christmas sites are up, so I feel like we were social distancing before it was cool, because we've been doing it for several years. So I think we were doing it right, and people through the Christmas sites, they're on until January second. So thank you guys for everything this year.
I had a, an opportunity to respond to a friend of mine who, much like Mr. Poston and a lot of other people that talk to Ms. Payne, who wishes we had more playground equipment. I just called his attention to COVID. That may not be the only reason. We have some, some other budget issues, but if you just look at Ms. Payne's report, our memberships are down thirteen hundred, and we were shut down for several months. So I think under the circumstances, we're doing fairly well, but it's a struggle and it's not over. So just ask everybody to be patient. Do what? All right, if there are no other comments, Mr. Smith has submitted a written report. Any questions for planning and development? Okay, if, if not, we'll move on to COVID update. I don't really have anything to say, except you probably saw Ms. Payne's report from today. The Christian County hospitalizations are down, and those on a ventilator are down, but there's still been quite a number of deaths, so that's unfortunate, but that's the update. You all see that, just as I do. All right, now we have a closed session for real estate. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
No, moved.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Poston. If you want to close session, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Alder?
Aye.
Alderman Flores?
Aye.
Alderman Callaway is absent. Alderman Poston?
Aye.
Alderman Schaefer?
Aye.
Staff needs to check.
Aye.
We have five aye votes. Motion carries.
All right, we are now back in open session and wish you all a Merry Christmas, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Smith, seconded by Flores and Smith, not Smith, and Schaefer and Poston and Alder. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, guys.